The council meeting of December 18th will come to order. Good evening. Would ask that all in attendance turn off or silence your electronic devices and if you would please stand to honor God and country. Gracious God, source of every gift and blessing, we are a grateful people, grateful for the gifts of life and liberty, grateful for this holy season and the hope it stirs. Father, two separate tragedies have touched our community in the past week. We pray for the families affected. We pray for our first responders impacted by these events. Bless each citizen, business, and city employee during this holiday season. May all who are a part of this city choose to be a source of joy and light for others. We thank and praise you for the work you have allowed us to complete in your city over the past year. May we faithfully focus on the work of this city. May we strategically execute the work citizens have asked us to complete. Guide us as we embark on the work of the city this evening. Amen. The pledge of our great nation will be led by scout Elijah James of Troop 797, who is a chaplain aide for the troop. Elijah, if you would step forward and lead us.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Elijah. If there are persons wishing to address council, forms are available in the back of the room and may be turned into the clerk to my right. And would ask at this time for Andrew Olson, Greco Middle School principal, to please step forward to the podium. Mr. Olson, your mayor, city council, and city staff welcomes you to Temple Terrace. And just as a way to introduce you to those who are with us this evening and those who are viewing, Mr. Olson has been an educator for the past 15 years and most recently served for five years as the principal of Progress Village Middle Magnet School. He earned a Bachelor of Science in Accounting from Lemoine College in Syracuse and worked as an accountant for two years prior to deciding his real calling was in education. He taught for two years at Orange Grove Middle Magnet and another three years at Rampeau Downtown Partnership School. He earned his Masters in Educational Leadership from the University of South Florida and spent five years as an assistant principal at Young Middle Magnet School in Tampa before being named principal of Progress Village Middle Magnet School in 2013. While at Progress Village, he oversaw consistent increases in student achievement and supported the growth and promotion of many leaders, including three teacher leaders that had become success coaches, five teacher leaders that had become assistant principals, and two assistant principals that have recently been accepted into the district's preparing new principals program. Mr. Olson was featured in Principal Magazine in May of 2018 for leadership practices and was featured in the district's Principal Weekly Spotlight on Great Practices three separate times. His initiatives include instructional leadership teams and Project Innovate, which supports teacher growth and training to implement curriculums with increased technology. He is currently working towards his Doctorate of Education and Program Innovation at USF with an anticipated graduation date of fall 2019. Besides doing his best to make a difference in the lives of his students, Mr. Olson played Division One college baseball on a scholarship and has run multiple marathons. He has been married for 14 years and has two daughters. City of Temple Terrace welcomes you as the Greco principal and we look forward to partnering with you. Would you like to say a few words, Mr. Olson?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for such a warm welcome. It's been great first three weeks at Greco and I look forward to working with everybody and help strengthen the community and Greco.
Thank you, Mr. Olson, and welcome. I would ask... Is Odalis Pritchard present? Ms. Pritchard, if you would step forward. Ms. Pritchard is the interim deputy director of Achievement Schools and I believe you might have a few words and just to educate our community a bit on this new role that you will be filling as you serve Temple Terrace as well.
Right. So I know that in the past you've probably been familiar with Dr. Anna Brown, who is still serving and supporting many of the schools in Temple Terrace, but I have the honor of working with and supporting Greco Middle School. We did do some realignment in our district at the beginning of this school year and so Greco is one of our achievement schools. So I, again, am very fortunate to be working with Greco and supporting them. I have a team that I work with and so we spend quite a bit of time at Greco Middle School, supporting them with professional development and coaching and supporting teachers and the administration there at Greco. I've actually known Mr. Olson for several years. We've both been in the district a very long time. I'm a former middle school principal as well, principal coach, and so, again, just very happy to be working with Greco and we both look forward to the partnership with the community. Please call on us and know that we very much welcome and support the Temple Terrace community.
Thank you, Ms. Pritchard. Now if Principal Tavia Shaw, principal of Terrace Community Middle School, would step forward and along with Principal Shaw this evening is also Karen McCartney, who will be presenting an update on Boost Your Coding Grant, and Johan Wannen, who will be presenting on Steam Powered History Lab Grant. Both of these grants were funded by our school support committee. Principal.
Good evening. Thank you for having me today, council members and Mayor Gerardo. My name is Tavia Shaw, principal of Terrace Community Middle School. I'm thrilled to be here this evening to present a very brief state of the school presentation as well as introduce my teachers, who will show a brief presentation on how the support grants helped our students. And I have a PowerPoint that I am using. Perfect, thank you. So Terrace Community Middle School is a back-to-basis curriculum, but we have practical application of knowledge in areas of STEAM education. We have an outdoor classroom. We also utilize critical thinking in our overall instructional program. For our state of the school, I wanted to present to you our school grades from last year and how we achieved our points, the possible number of points that you can receive for a school grade as 900 points. Each one of these cells indicate... indicator for that makeup... that makes up our school grade. So we have ELA, which is English Language Arts, mathematics, science, civics, and an acceleration portion of that. And each measurement measures the percent of students who were proficient in each one of those areas. And as you can see, our students did very well last year. We earned a total of 768 points, earning us a school grade of an A, which is our 19th school grade of an A. So we're very proud of that. Thank you. We do have very ambitious goals. Even though we performed very well, we feel that we can do a better job. Of course, we want to make sure that all of our students are proficient and that all of our students are meeting learning gains. So I just wanted to briefly just go over a few of our goals in each one of our four main instructional areas for our students. For our language arts, we hope that our goal is for 91% of our students to be proficient. It's a very ambitious goal, but we've been there before, so we want to get back there. For civics, this is a course in which only our seventh grade students are assessed and our goal is for 98% of our students to be proficient in civics. In mathematics, our goal is 95% to be proficient in mathematics and that's an ongoing point for us, indicator for us. We typically score at 95% and we think that that is a very ambitious goal for mathematics for middle school students. And for science, which is only assessed in eighth grade, our goal is for 90% of our eighth grade science students to remain proficient. So those are some of our academic goals that we have. We have other key performance indicators, but I was just asked to do a little snapshot, so I figured that our academics was probably the area that I should highlight for you all and let you know how we're doing and what we plan to do for our students in 2018, 2019. Now I would like to present Ms. McCartney, who is our business tech computer applications teacher, and she received a Temple Terrace grant last school year and she's going to present on how she used those funds in her classroom to support innovation and learning with our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Shaw.
Hi, my name is Karen McCartney and as Ms. Shaw said, the kids call me Ms. Mac, which is why there seems to be a discrepancy. I teach business technology, computer applications. We do an awful lot of fun stuff and I try to sneak in a little bit of education in there as I can. As you will see, if this will pop up correctly, last year I received a grant, the Temple Terrace Grant, from your school support team and we received enough money to purchase Kindle Fires as well as a Lego Boost, which is a coding... if you've got grandkids, I definitely suggest the Lego Boost. They get to build their own robots and then they get to program them with the Kindle Fires in order to make their little robots move. And I'm telling you, absolutely nothing can compare to seeing these children as excited as they are about being able to use their fine motor skills and work together and use their soft skills with communicating with each other to make their little cat meow whenever they feed it or make that wonderful little robot roll across the floor. And I apologize that I couldn't bring any with me this evening, but we're just about to start our semester exams and unfortunately, building robots and making them roll across the floor do not come into our semester exams, but as the... I don't know where I'm pointing. Am I pointing this direction? Oh, no, that was not in... There should have been a video that has all of my lovely little children waving and saying "thank you," but I guess it got a little bit lost in the swing a bit. But I just really wanted to talk about how the impact that these funds had on my class. I am a floating teacher and if you're not familiar with what that means, it means that as soon as one classroom leaves and that teacher gets to be... have their moment to breathe, take a drink, and plan in grade 400 papers, I roll right into their classroom with my cart and say, "thank you," and I have a cart full of laptops and my kids get to benefit from them. But during testing, I don't get to keep those laptops. So I can't even begin to tell you how important it is for me to have access to the internet, have access to programs, applications, in order to continue and further their education and make it so that they can still... I can still do my job and they can still do their job, even though we don't have the laptops. Because one of my favorite things to hear is, "well, how can we have computer class without computers?" Well, let me tell you. We have this great grant that offered us the opportunity to be able to have other things at our hands. And I've been on both sides of the grant program. I've written grants, I've approved grants, I've sat as a committee. I know what it takes to have to sift through all of those grant proposals and decide who is most deserving. And I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you so much for choosing my students and my school because it means the world to me and it means the world to them and because it means the world to them, it means even more. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mac.
And now Ms. Wannen.
Hello, everyone. Council members, Mayor Gerardo, audience. I don't know if you've ever had this experience I have trying to explain the origins of the Industrial Revolution and the workings of a steam engine to an absolutely baffled audience, some of them confused, some of them drifting off into sleep. And every year it's just very, very difficult to get these things across to them and I came across your grant and I thought, like, light bulb, aha. Describing it doesn't seem to do very good. Maybe if I just show it to them, that'll be an entirely different result. So sure enough, grant proposal, done, and I have a steam engine. And now we're off and running. And actually, speaking of running, could I run it? Is it all right? Can I run it real quick? Okay. So this is a Polish steam engine and in Poland it's part of the curriculum and it belongs to the science department and there's some really interesting physics at work here. There we go. So centrifugal force, the flywheel, storing momentum, keeping the engine running nice and smooth, and it's super quiet. And I tried to explain to the students how you can use this to actually do work, all right, which is the whole point of the Industrial Revolution. Put wheels on the engine and you have a train now, all right? Put it in... In fact, you can't have a factory really without the thing. So in order to try to... You know, I was trying to search for a way to show them how the work you can do and I'm like, "oh, wait a minute, I gotta... So here is a Thomas Edison 1800 Big Trola and I'm like, "oh, let's just see if we can scrap a drive belt onto it and maybe it'll work. Let's see if it works." I think it works. I'm not nervous at all. All right. My goal is to not end up on YouTube. So this is actually a Hawaiian luau from 1900. I know. And you ever had like a grandparent tell you to put a sock in it? That's literally where the term comes from. So what I was able to do is to show the students what they could do with it and then they're off and running. And that's the whole point of the grant is to give them control of the thing. And they built a telegraph, they built a water pump, they built a crane, and just all these incredible things that they were able to do with it. And that's all because of the grant money that you all gave, so, so much appreciated. And we just cannot do this without your help. So my students, thank you. The science department uses it, we're gonna use it again. I've had a student actually come in, first thing, first year, like, "so my brother was able to do this and I'm gonna do something bigger and better." Bam, there you go. So, thank you very much. And I'm not gonna try to remove this stuff in a not awkward way.
Who wouldn't want to be in Mr. Wannen's class? As we continue on the agenda, a library board appointment. There is one vacancy on the library board. The city received one application from Jessica King. Is the applicant present? I would entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Jessica King's to the library board for a term extending from December 18, 2018 until August 4, 2020. Is there a motion?
To approve the appointment of Jessica King.
Thank you, Councilman Schisler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Chambers. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye. Opposed, nay sign. Thank you and thank you, Ms. Kings, for your willingness to serve our community. Next is the minutes of the December 4, 2018 city council meeting. Prior to moving to acceptance of those, the chair did note a couple of corrections that would like to make note of in Section 8B. Originally, under appointments, Councilwoman Donahue had been appointed to the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council. Subsequently, had to decline that appointment due to conflicting commitments and subsequently, Councilman Chambers is going to fill that seat, but did want that to be reflected in the minutes. Also continuing with 8B, would ask that the vote on the appointments accurately be reflected, that it was after the discussion and not prior to the discussion. And then finally, in Section 8C, the vice mayor, the first motion was made by Councilman Ross, the second motion was made by Councilman Chambers. They were out of order in the minutes. And with those corrections, I would accept or entertain a motion to approve the minutes with corrections as noted.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion around the minutes? All in favor signify with aye. Opposed, the nay sign? Thank you. Persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or on the consent agenda, a three-minute time limit will be imposed on all comments from the public. Individual members of the public who are present in the audience may designate in writing a representative to speak on their behalf, not extending beyond a 10-minute period. As speakers come to the podium, please state your name and your city of residence. During public comment on items not on the agenda, directors in attendance do make note of these items. During the city manager's report later in the agenda, sitting city manager Albano may make comment on items related to city business or where further research is needed, he may assign staff for follow-up. First person to address council this evening, Mr. Jack Ritter.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I've given this issue quite a bit of thought. What does it take to establish a residency in the city of Temple Terrace? Buy a home? Homestead it? Rent a house? Rent an apartment? Obtain a utility account with the city? Simply rent an apartment, register to vote in Hillsborough County using a Temple Terrace address? Change registration on autos to match Temple Terrace address? Change driver's license address to match Temple Terrace address of record? Are all of these items required? Some, a combination thereof, or none? Exempt employees with an employment contract that has a residency requirement... has a residency requirement. Said requirement was to be met within six months of employment. That date was sometime in October of 17. And maintain, the residency requirement is to be maintained throughout employment with the city. Facts: Employee owns a home within the city? House is not homesteaded? Said employee has a homestead in Pinellas County, is registered to vote in said county, and in fact, employee voted in Pinellas County on 19 October 2018. Said employee is not registered to vote in Hillsborough County per my latest inquiry. All of this, in my humble opinion, is a breach of contract. We have three exempt employees in Temple Terrace and this is one of them. If you doubt what my facts are, I enjoin you to investigate on your own and determine this employee forthwith.
Mayor, council, good evening. Jim D. Tyne, Temple Terrace. I was very disappointed when I watched the December 4 council meeting and observed the mayor blindside a council member and then publicly berate that council member. It was obviously planned, as evidenced by the rapid fire of accusations. It came across as very unprofessional and vindictive. The type of behavior is not becoming to the office of the mayor, this council, or our city. Even more disturbing is that I made a few phone calls to fact-check the accusations and not one held true. No person that sits on this dais should ever, ever have to experience that type of behavior. I understand that there are differences of opinion, but they can and should be handled with respect. I expect better than this from our city leaders. We already had enough embarrassment in this city. And I will leave you with this: People who live in glass houses shouldn't throw stones.
Hi, Mayor Mel. Hi, council. I didn't bring a Victrola or a steam engine, so I feel under... Tim Horton, Temple Terrace, business owner. And Mayor Mel, Gil, and prayers for Charles, who's not here tonight. Know me well enough to know that I go on forever, so I wrote it down, so I'll get under my three minutes. You're welcome. Just kidding. But I'm here tonight to talk about this new transit tax. The time to protest that stupidity is over whether we like it or not and I didn't much at all, but now's the time to maximize the revenue that's collected and not let the same old system waste it away. Because that's what's on the itinerary now. We need to demand that Temple Terrace gets its piece of the revenue. Our fair share is fair enough. We don't need other people's, but we need to make sure we get ours and because of some moving pieces that I'm not going to address tonight, it's likely we aren't unless we watch for it. This money needs to be spent in effective ways and not whizzed off like been going on for the last 10 years. So you're gonna see me here going forward to ensure to that end because I'm gonna be all over Hart, like, bad news. I was pleased to see Mayor Mel appointed Gil Schisler to the Hartline Board. Interestingly, the same day that they announced that there was some other stuff that happened at the Hart Board where they started to talk about the money already. So because of the Hart Board's legendary poor performance, let's call it that, I'm glad that we now have somebody on the Hart Board that's going to hopefully be on these people. Y'all know Gil. I mean, he's an FO and an HR expert. He's my friend. I helped him get elected. But I think he's gonna be somebody that can take a grip on this Hart Board down there and watch it. We need to demand that Temple Terrace gets its piece and I think Gil can help us do that. Hart Boards cut and change lines, they've rearranged their financial management down there, bus stops are changing. I'm running out of time. The mess at Hart is well-known. So I've initiated some major Freedom of Information requests down at Hart. They don't want to give it up. I was expecting to have it tonight, but we're gonna find out where they've been spending money flying Mayor Bob and other folks around to DC and Miami and Charlotte and all kinds of places and get on this so that we can watch it. You can expect to see me in the future. Temple Terrace needs a watchful eye, strong leadership that I expect out of Gil on the Hart Board to make sure that Temple Terrace gets served by Hart with this new slush fund of money. And in conclusion, I was happy to see that the Hart announcement about something else came out the same day that Gil was announced by the Hart Board. Congrats for winning your race, by the way. And I'll be back with more data and more stuff that we'll put on the agenda so that we can maximize the revenue that's coming.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ken Copanaver. I'm a Temple Terrace resident, lived here for four and a half years. I'm also gonna be talking about the transportation referendum. I am part of an informal group that we've titled Temple Terrace for Transportation. We formed after the transportation referendum was passed. We were hoping to and looking forward to working with councilperson Sherri Donahue with all of her experience on the Hart Board, but we're also looking forward to working with Councilman Gil Schisler as well. We've had one meeting to date. We met at the library on December 5. We've also developed a Facebook group. I think one of the employees of Temple Terrace attended that meeting as well. We have spoken to citizens and the citizens have come up with a list of top answers that they are most interested in when it comes to transportation and the money that's gonna become available through the transportation referendum. What came up most predominantly, which is the other gentleman was talking about, is more and better bus routes for everyone. Those are fairly scant in Temple Terrace now. Pedestrian safety is actually obviously very timely after there was a death this weekend on Fowler Avenue. Safe bike lanes, you know, not bike lanes that have just a piece of tape on the road, but actually where the bicyclists are safe. More sidewalks, of course, always a demand, I'm sure. And a fast transit option to USF and downtown. Those are kind of the top five, but there were others. What we'd like to see the city do is move toward what is called a complete streets model. And this complete streets model considers all forms of transportation equally important. Most transportation now is focused on cars being the primary mode of transportation and we hope to see that change. So so far, we met with All For Transportation, which is the group that headed up the referendum and got the money so we could have a better understanding of how the money's gonna work, how it's gonna flow. We've spoken with the Center for Urban Transportation and Research at USF. We want to meet with county commissioners and in university area... We want to meet with county commissioners and then University Area Community Development Corporation in January. What we would like to be is an asset to the city council. We recognize that transportation is a very complex issue, that there's many different facets to it. We don't think there's going to be an easy fix if you add a couple of bus routes. And what we'd like to do is fill gaps where you see them, where you would like more information from the public or more research done. We have an email address. Our email address is templeterrestransportation@gmail.com, and we certainly give everyone the opportunity to email us there, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Russell Patterson.
Good evening, I'm Russ Patterson. I live in unincorporated Hillsborough County, across the street from Temple Terrace. I moved here to Hillsborough County back in 2004, and I've actually been active in Temple Terrace pretty much that whole time, doing things like walking in the 4th of July parades, planting trees all over town, cleaning up yards, driving golf carts for the arts festival, and even teaching and volunteering at King High School. I'm also a member of the Temple Terrace Rotary Club. I like living here, and I feel it's important that Temple Terrace has a clean, honorable government. I know many of you, and I like you too. However, this past month shows that there is something seriously wrong with Temple Terrace leadership. People are noticing, and as a Rotarian, I try, sometimes I succeed, sometimes I don't, to live by the Rotary four-way test. It's, is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendships? And will it be beneficial to all concerned? And I don't believe the Temple Terrace mayor has lived up to that test. The way she treated Sherri Donahue and what she said about her at the last council meeting was unfair and untrue. Sherri was a strong leader and member of the Heart Board, and I know the county commissioners don't understand why she removed. It appears to me that the mayor was being unnecessarily vindictive to someone who has the highest standards and rarely fights back. I know Gil Schisler's going to do a good job and will represent Temple Terrace well. However, the way he was appointed was not right. There's no need to tear somebody down in order to elevate another. You are a team of elected officials and can only accomplish great things if you respect each other, and I hope you can do that. Thank you.
Sherman Smith.
Madam Mayor, city councils, my name is Sherman Smith. My wife and I, Sylvia, my wife Sylvia and I, moved to Lindbank's Place in Rustic Village in August of 1987. So we've been here a while, and we've enjoyed the city. We raised four children here. Two of them graduated from South Florida. The others went to Greco and King High School. We love the city. We belong to the Temple Terrace golf course. A lot of benefits, a lot of amenities. We love the city. Until recently. And mainly on our street, and it may be in other areas of the city, I don't know. And sometimes I'm a quiet resident and don't get out, and my wife tells me I don't see new things she puts in the house. I'm not too observant sometimes. But when it's right next to you, I guess you notice it more. And this has happened to our nice little 16-home cul-de-sac street on Lindbank's Place. And if you don't know where that is, it's directly east of Greco Junior High School. The property I'm talking about, 11310, backs up right against Greco Junior High School. That home sold about three months ago, and a company or person or somebody bought it. And to my dismay and displeasure and really unhappy about it, they have turned it into an Airbnb. Now, I'm a hillbilly from Kentucky. I didn't know what in the world that was. I could talk about tobacco and other things, but an Airbnb? What is that? Well, nobody lives there. It's like a hotel in the middle of our 16-home, nice, peaceful cul-de-sac street. And we call it Rustic Village. We have several residents there who have lived there as long as me and some longer and some less. And of all the residents who own homes and live in the homes, they're against this situation and condition. And there are a lot of reasons for it. Three weeks ago or so, there was parties going on at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning. And as you can tell by looking at me, I'm not a teenager. Those are not my kind of hours. They're speeding up and down the street. There was litter on the yard and cars, too many, and everywhere. I would request and hope that the city of Temple Terrace and the council members and the attorneys or the city manager or somebody could put an end to this, stop this, especially at Greco because it is so near to the school. We don't know who's there. We don't know what they've got with them. And I'm not saying the sky's falling, but you know, people now do carry firearms, and they also have some, know how to make bombs. You see it every day on the news. And if we don't know who's there, we don't know what's going on behind closed doors. So myself, as president of Rustic Village Homeowners Association, and we do have restrictions and covenants, how enforceable they are, I'm not sure. I'm not an attorney. But I do want to thank the city council, the mayor, the city council members, Tom Barone, who got back with me and responded very quickly, and thank you for the service you're doing and sacrificing your time for our city.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And I, and I, we were briefed, council was briefed earlier this week. We thank all the residents who are here this evening. We know that Mr. Barone and our city, our city manager and our city attorney are working on some draft language, so it is being addressed and taken very seriously. Thank you all for being here this evening. John Noonan.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm John Noonan, 305 South Glen Arvin Avenue in Temple Terrace. I wanted to thank you and even call attention more to an item that you dealt with at your last meeting. It's kind of tucked away in the minutes at the bottom of page 12. It's Resolution 146-18, which authorizes the city manager to spend money that's coming in, revenue that's coming into the city for redevelopment, for redevelopment to pay down debt. I think many ordinary citizens in town assumed that that would take place, but I think until you made it explicit that that was your will, that was your intention, I suppose the city manager could have been freed to spend it on scooters or something else. Who knows, who knows what? My request is that you check this continually, that you insist that in quarterly reports or annual reports, whatever you think best, that some kind of statement about the reduction of debt is made from the city manager. I think you will, but I just wanted to add my voice to urge you to do that because I think in terms of the long-term health of the city, getting rid of $27 million worth of debt is probably one of the best things you could do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Donahue, Mr. Donahue.
Good evening. Mike Donahue, Temple Terrace. I wanted to also add that there's another Airbnb which you may know about on Park Ridge, I think. I went out there. I go out in the morning to run, and I walk that way, and there was like 20 cars one day, and then there was 20 cars the next day, and the day after that. I don't know the exact address, but I'll get it for you. As a retired educator, it was nice to see the presentation tonight. That was really nice and welcome to. Mr. Olson's gone. Good, he needs, he deserves to go home. But that's great. That was really great. It was a nice program, and congratulations to Charles, to Mr. Schisler, Mr. Chambers, and Ms. Donahue for winning last, in that election. Thank you very much. Did a great job, and welcome back to some of you. I wanted to talk about the library just for a minute. It was very evident during the early voting what a jewel the library is, and I think back in the recession, hours were probably cut for a good reason, but that's long gone. And, you know, we keep the rec center open on Sunday from 12 to 5:00. It's heavily used. And I think it was in the budget for this year to open on Sunday, but that was cut out by administration. I'd like you to revisit that and not make it a next-year item. 52 Sundays a year or 50 Sundays a year, I don't think is going to break the budget. We have a little extra money. We're not in dire straits like we used to be, and I think it's a great place for kids to go and adults, especially when your football team's 5 and 9. I'm just telling the truth. The other thing I want to talk about is awkward, it's unpleasant, and I'm sorry that I have to come tonight and say this, you know? The candidates forum two months ago, two and a half months ago, and at the back of the room, the very prominent citizen, two of them in fact, and they were hypothesizing about the fact that they thought that Ms. Donahue had outed the mayor, had been the one to call the paper and all that, and she found out about that, and she called this guy and said that in no uncertain terms that I'd do that. I would never do that. I would never embarrass the city that way. Now, I tell you that because for the last six months, what the man said was, I thought you did it because of the way the mayor treats you. Well, the last six or eight months, I've heard that from people at the gym, in Publix, at parties. I even heard it one morning when I was running and a guy stopped me and says, how does she put up with that? Okay? Then last week was kind of the coup de grace. So I wanted to say that. Now, I will say this, when you're in politics, you expect some blowback, okay? And Sherri's a big girl, she can handle herself. But as you know, Mayor Mel, and you teach leadership, the qualities of a good leader is somebody that can take your team and get the people with their best abilities in line and take your organization forward, all right? Sherri has the uncanny ability over the years, and I was thinking today, it's 26 years ago. She went back to work at the Education Foundation, and she was in charge of scholarships, and there were 12 when she started, and 10 years later, when she left, there were 500. That's every single year, okay? She left there to come back to Temple Terrace, the Chamber of Commerce. When she started, there were 300 members. When she left, there were 700 members. She turned the business expo into a big event, at the Sun Dome no less. It made money every year. She collaborated with the Arts Council people because they were losing money having an auction every year, and they got together and started Art and Blanc, which makes money every year. She collaborated with Florida College. They were having trouble with development, so she collaborated with them. Their banquet's, there were 40 grand in two years before she stepped back off of that. The Brew Fest, that was her idea. Trout Through the Terrace, that was her idea. She's involved in everything. I could read you all the things that she's done, and what I'm telling you is she's a gem. She's an asset to the city here, and she has the skills that can help move Temple Terrace forward, all right? And that's why she ran for public office. But she doesn't deserve to be treated with this respect, okay? I had 120 employees when I worked as a principal, and there's a couple of them I didn't like, never would, but I always greeted them in the morning. I treated them with respect. I never embarrassed them. I got them everything they deserved in their job. And if I didn't like them, they didn't know it, and I think that's the way she deserves to be treated too. So I hope, Mayor, that you'll go forward in treating all the council members with equal respect, and you'll move the city forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Allison Fernandez.
Good evening, Mayor, council people. I would like to talk with you about some education issues. You all have seen me before many times talking about education. I'm very active at Greco, and we always have the discussion in the community, we need to support our schools more. We need to support our local schools more. Well, I'm here to tell you that you have two opportunities to support Greco Middle School, and I think they're very nice opportunities. The first one is actually a bicycle scavenger hunt through the core of Temple Terrace. Now, I know some of you might say, a bicycle, really? But this is actually the idea of Sam Lowheed. Many of you, I think, remember how active he was in Temple Terrace, how much he loved bicycling and how much he shared his love of bicycling with the community. And he and I talked about this event a long time ago, and I said, it's a great event, Sam. I'm, I love it. Tell me what you need me to do. And unfortunately, we lost Sam before he could make this event a reality, but we were talking at Greco Middle School, and we said, we would really like to do this. He was a Greco student and always very active in the school. So we, Greco PTSA, are hosting a bicycle scavenger hunt on February 19th, and we want everybody to participate. I don't care how old you are. Even if you don't want to be on a bicycle, we have a special category for golf carts. So there's no excuse. And after the hunt is finished, there will be a party zone with food and music at the Greco, and it all kicks off from the Greco track, and that's a Saturday. It runs from 2:00 to 6:00, and we think people will be very excited to come out and bicycle through the beautiful Temple Terrace community, learn a little bit more about it, and help support a local school. The second event I'm very excited about is the Career Expo, and that is the Friday before spring break, which is March 15th. This is a curriculum-based event. The students work on resumes and visioning boards and looking at their future and possible careers. They take a talent and interest survey, and it helps. I know they're in middle school, and people think that they don't need to be thinking about careers, but that is completely untrue. They're making decisions. A lot of them are taking high school-level classes. They need to start thinking about the areas they like. So we want to invite all of you in the community to participate in this event. It's, it's basically a two to two and a half hour event. You come, and the community comes in, and it's a job fair style where you're at a table, and the students come to you and ask you questions like they were, you know, exploring career options. They dress for their career and, you know, keep in mind, they're middle schoolers, they like hands-on things, but these are some opportunities and some ways to help us make improvements in this school. You heard, we have a new principal, so we're excited about, a lot of change is coming. So please, support us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Charles Loeb, late?
Good evening, Charles Loeb. I live over in Tampa, but I live close enough to walk over and pass by you all over the Iran Line Bar, and I've been just on the other side of the city. First of all, I want to wish everybody season's greetings. I think maybe it'd be a good idea to start with that. Mainly, as I walk over and pass by, I wanted to talk to you about the black flag you all have, the one with POWs and MIA's. I did make, the city was very generous in donating when I came in June and donating the amount of money they did for the, for that program I found, the golf program. And I wanted to donate something else that you can put in your case for the city. This is a set of stamps from, a pair of stamps and a sheet of 50 that were made in 1970. There were six cents in those days, and they would have to do with disabled veterans and people missing in action and POWs. And I did want to donate this to the city. I wanted you to put it in your case, so I think it would go real well with your flag. Secondly, I also came across this recently listening to tape and dealing with the Vietnam era, having to do with what is called, many civilians don't know, I sort of didn't know this beforehand, what is called the six-point code of being a POW. It's not just name, rank, and serial number, but a complex code, which I copied down the best I could, so I'm going to donate to you that also. And so one other thing I thought about for the veterans in all this was maybe over someday in the future, at some point, to go over to that city or maybe FDOT could go over and make an arrangement to go public with transportation up to Bushnell, the Florida National Cemetery, on Veterans Day and Memorial Day. Now, for those people who are interested in transportation, I did want to mention this to you, on Thursday, there is going to be open house over at FDOT. So if you have any ideas having to do with FDOT, they want to do for what's called the TIP program. It's Transportation Improvement Program. I already submitted mine in case I can't get over Thursday because of the weather, but if other people are interested here in transportation and do want to talk about it, Thursday's the day, and I think it's from 9:00 to 6:00. One other point for people that are interested on the board meeting over at Heart and what's going on with that, the next board meeting, to my knowledge, is on January 7th, which is a Monday.
It's been moved to the 14th.
Oh, it's been moved to the 14th? Okay. Well, it's moved to the 14th, but anyway, that is the next board meeting, and of course, Councilwoman Donahue's seen me there a couple of times, and I have my own ideas about what should be done with the money. And I, again, one of my times run out, and I do want to, once again, wish you all happy holiday, and I guess I will give this either to the chief or to Ms. Mooney over here. Whichever you all prefer.
You can give it to the clerk. Thank you, Mr. Loeb.
Thank you.
Annette Rennie.
Good evening. Annette Rennie, 9512 Woodland Ridge Drive. Concerning the appointment of Councilman Schisler to Heart Board line, Sherri answered at the forum when asked a question that, about financing in this community, and she said, I don't have any knowledge of that. She said, we have people who do that. Our mayor makes decisions that she's allowed to make based on what they're the best at. Gil Schisler, Councilman Schisler, has a financial background. You've heard the saying, it's not personal, it's business? That's what it is. It's business. It's not personal. I watched because I had an earache. That was one of the first- I watched, because I had an earache, that was one of the first council meetings I've missed. If anybody was disrespectful, I feel Ms. Donahue was, I watched her go on and on, and our mayor sat there and finally stopped it. But this has been going on. I respect you, Mayor, I think that you are one of the most giving people I know, you're very business-oriented, I respect that, and I think that your presence here has made a big difference. Thank you so much. Bye.
Norma Henning.
My name's Norma Henning, I live at 434 Pinehurst. I'm a fairly recent resident of Temple Terrace. We moved here about three years ago, and I'm an immigrant, came here about 30 years ago, lived in, you know, with the Army in different places, and then with studying and my career. So we could have moved anywhere we choose to move to Temple Terrace because we think it's a great town, and have really enjoyed living here. Part of getting involved in a city then also means attending meetings and, you know, paying attention to what's going on in the community. I was surprised to see Councilwoman Donahue removed from the Hart Board, but of course, it's obviously, you know, a decision that can be made, and obviously, we're also looking very much in favor, forward to moving forward with Councilman Mr. Schisler. But what I was mostly surprised with, and I guess I'm not the only one that was struck by this, were the gratuitous disparaging comments that were made just before the vote was taken, that I felt were not only unnecessary, but also were false. I have a different recollection of this town hall meeting, but I felt like these comments were made to create the impression that Councilwoman Donahue was either unwilling or unable to wrap her mind around finances, which I think is pretty much an insult, given her record. And I think you owe her an apology, and I hope you're big enough to make it. Thank you.
Joa Franti.
Thank you very much, councilmembers and Madam Mayor, for letting me just say a few words. Number one, I want to talk about Gil Schisler, his appointment to the Hartline Board. The one thing I really respect you for, Mayor Mel, is the fact that you've worked in business and you know how to assign people to the tasks that you feel they could best handle. And I think, in this case, I called Gil, or I sent him an email, because every year we give out toys to our kids for St. Vincent de Paul, and believe it or not, there are people in this community that don't have cars, they just don't. And we see that all the time, we go on home visits and whatever. So I contacted Gil, and I asked if there was any possibility that we could get some one-day passes from Hartline to give to these people that don't have cars, and they don't have a lot of financial assistance. But anyway, so, I said if we could get between 20 and 25 cars, I said that would really be great. Well, I get a call from Gil last week, and he said, I got you those cars, I got you those passes. He got 100 of them. Hartline gave complimentary 100 passes to the people. And just a side note, the other day, I delivered some toys and things to one of the families, and I gave her an envelope with several bus passes in there. She almost cried, it almost made me cry, to think about people that are in such dire need, and the fact that Gil was able to get those passes for us was, we appreciate it, Gil. Thank you. The other thing I wanted to say was that, the guy that Mike Donahue was talking about is me. I'm the one that was sitting in the back of the room, and I'm the one that told somebody that I really think that Sherry is the one that brought all this up with Mel. The reason I thought that was not because of the way, as Mike, I think you were alluding to me, saying that I felt that way because of the way that Mel treated Sherry, that Sherry was upset about it. But anyway, the reason I did is because, prior to this, I know that I believe that Sherry was involved in checking out Charles Stevenson's degree with the University of Florida. So, I just probably incorrectly assumed that because she did it with Charles, that she probably did it with Mel. So that was my, that was the whole thing. It was not because I felt that Mel was mistreating or anything else, or, and Sherry got mad about it. But anyway, I just wanted to tell you, Mel, thank you for the wonderful job you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, we will now go to item 4A, a municipal code enforcement board lien reduction petition for the address at 13016 Sanctuary Cove Drive, number 0201. Municipal Code Enforcement Board Chair Richard Schmidt will present the case. Mr. Schmidt.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I'm here this evening to introduce the board recommendation for a lien reduction for the property located at 13016 Sanctuary Cove Drive, unit number 201, with a lien amount of $12,600 in the city versus Joaquin Hernando Cadavid, in case number 10-1146. Case 14, 101146 originated back in September of 2010. The lien reduction request was presented to the board on November 10th, 2018, board meeting by Director Buroni. After hearing Director Buroni, from Director Buroni and the petitioner, Ms. Conklin, and board discussion, the board on the recommendation as presented to the board by Director Buroni to reduce the lien from $12,600 to $1,000. By motion and a 6-0 vote, the recommendation to the council for this lien reduction is to be reduced to the $1,000, with the stipulation that the reduced lien amount be paid in full within 30 days of council approval, or the lien amount will revert back to the full amount of $12,600. If you have any questions, I'm willing to answer.
Director Buroni, do you have anything additional to add?
No, Madam Mayor.
I would ask, is the property owner or representative present?
No.
Are there members of the public wishing to address council on this item? I would then ask councilmembers, comments or questions?
No question.
If council determines a lien reduction, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Schisler.
I'm sorry, I just have one comment, and it's in general to the whole concept of this penalty, if you will. I don't know why, and I realize this is the way the code's written, but I think that this particular charge for the fire inspection fee that comes around every year on the rental, would seem to me that we'd be far better pressed with collection on that than imposing $12,600 worth of fines in the course of time on a $200 bill. I just, it's an editorial comment, has nothing to do with the way the code's written and what y'all have done with that, but I know I have that on a condo that I have in Meadowwood, and wow, $12,000 max. Now, yeah, I recognize it's got to go for a long, long time to get that way, but I think the city would be far better served by having a collection process, just like a water bill or something along those lines. But I'm in favor of the reduction at that point.
Do you want me to respond a little?
Thank you, Councilman. If council determines a lien reduction is appropriate, we call for a motion to approve a lien reduction in case number 10-1146, city versus Joaquin Hernando Cadavid, for the property located at 13016 Sanctuary Cove Drive, number 201. Is there a motion?
I move that we accept the recommendation of the code board to reduce the lien to $1,000, and also note that these are handled differently now this doesn't happen.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye. Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Moving on to item 4B, a municipal code enforcement lien reduction petition for the property located at 105 Deer Park Avenue. Once again, Chairman Richard Schmidt will present the case.
Good evening, again. I am here this evening to introduce to the board the recommendation for a lien reduction for a property located at 105 Deer Park Avenue with a lien of $34,375 in city versus Natalie Anderson, in case number 10-2154, case 16-0257, and case 17-138. The petitioner's name for that evening was Mr. Vincent Hernandez for Ms. Anderson. The lien reduction request was presented to the board on November 10th, 2018, board meeting by Director Buroni. After hearing from Director Buroni, the petitioner, Mr. Hernandez, and board discussion, the board on a recommendation as presented to the board by Director Buroni to reduce the lien from $34,375 to $1,900. The board motion added the unpaid balance of $22.99 for an outstanding water bill. By motion of a 6-0 vote, the recommendation to the council for this lien reduction to $1,922.99, with the stipulation that the reduced lien amount be paid in full within 30 days of the city council approval, or the lien amount will revert back to the full amount of $34,375. If you have any questions, I am here to answer. I do not believe Mr. Hernandez is here this evening. He is not.
Are there any members of the public that would like to address council on this item? Seeing none, if council determines that a lien reduction is appropriate, we call for a motion to approve a lien reduction in case number 10-2154, 16-0257, and 17-1378, city versus Natalie Anderson, for the property located at 105 Deer Park Avenue.
Move to accept the recommendation of the code board with one small modification, move to reduce it to $1,925, just round it up to the next, I don't know, we've got 99 cents and stuff in here. So, I move to accept the recommendation with one slight modification to reduce it to $1,925 to be paid within 30 days or it reverts back to the original amount.
We have a motion from Councilman Ross, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Chambers, any discussion?
I do have a comment. I do believe that when you bring us items like this, and they're coming with unanimous vote from the code compliance board, please let them know that that sends a very strong message to us. And so, as you can see, we don't have many questions, the attachments always explain the situation, and that's very helpful coming to the meeting, but hearing that this is unanimous vote makes a big difference. So, thank you.
If there are no other comments, all in favor, please signify with aye. Opposed, nay sign? Thank you, motion carries. Thank you to Chairman Schmidt. Next, the second public hearing and second reading of ordinance 1467 to adopt the 2018 Capital Improvement Section CIS Schedule of Projects update is now open. Melissa Dickens, Hillsborough County Planning Commission, will give a brief review.
Hi, good evening, councilmembers, Mayor. I was previously here, Melissa Dickens, Planning Commission staff, I was previously here on December 4th and provided a detailed overview of the FY 2019 through 2023 CIS Schedule of Projects update. Again, this is an update that is required by Chapter 163, it's something that comes before you every year as an excerpt from your adopted CIP. And I didn't want to go through the presentation again, but I did want to let you know that I am available if there are any questions or anyone would like me to discuss any aspects of the CIS schedule development. Thank you.
And I would ask, are there any members of the public that would like to address council on this item? Mr. Loeb?
Yes, a couple of questions. First of all, when it comes to, I've been talking about the bus, and one thing, I was talking to Mary Ann the other day, was about to, about the 39 bus, about upgrading the schedule, people could use that to go to Social Security and all that. Do you work with that, or along that line with Hart on routes and things like that?
Should I come back here? Yes, we, for that process, that process is developed by Hart, we incorporate it by reference into the Schedule of Projects, and Ms. Abrahamson may be able to describe some detail that she did for the 10-year plan that is in here, but we don't work directly on the development of the routes, that is completely up to Hart.
Okay, question number two. In dealing with the sales tax, would that have any bearing on speeding up your programs? Like, for example, say they have something scheduled for 2022 or 23 or something like that, would that become a 2020 or something along that line?
This process this evening, that is, this is for what was adopted in the CIP by the city council back in September, and so if there are any future projects that are sped up by the process, that would be up to the city, because what we develop is the excerpt from that adopted CIP. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. Are there any other comments from members of the public? We will now close the public hearing. Council questions? If the clerk would please read the title of ordinance 1467?
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, providing for the annual modification and update to the capital improvement section of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan for the City of Temple Terrace pursuant to Chapter 163 Florida statutes, by modifying and updating the five-year capital improvement schedule of projects for fiscal year 2018-2019 through fiscal year 2022-2023, and incorporating the 10-year long-term improvements for the multimodal transportation district for 2019 through 2028 into the Schedule of Projects, adopting by reference per the Comprehensive Plan Cap Policy 1.5.13, Hillsborough County Metropolitan Planning Organization's Transportation Improvement Program, Hillsborough Area Regional Transit Hartz Transit Development Plan, and Hillsborough County Public Schools Facilities Work Program, providing severability and effective date in repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
Thank you. Would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 1467, the 2018 Capital Improvement Section Schedule of Projects update?
Move for adoption, ordinance 1467.
Thank you, Councilman Schisler, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Ross, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye. Opposed, nay sign? Thank you, motion carries. Thank you, Melissa. Item 6B, a first reading of ordinance 1466 to correct previously adopted ordinance 1414 due to Scrivener's error. We will open the public hearing. City Planner Mary Ann Abrahamson will present.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I am here to present TXD 1803, which is a correction to previously adopted ordinance 1414. This previously adopted ordinance was adopted on April 4th, 2017. This request was initiated because city staff noticed an error in that adopted ordinance to eight folio numbers. This example you see in front of you, this carries throughout all eight, so that those numbers that are highlighted, the adopted folio number had a 3 on the fourth number N, should have been a 2. So this ordinance will correct all of the errors in which that occurred in ordinance Staff recommends that council approve ordinance 1466 per TXD 1803.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Council questions? We will close the public hearing. If the city clerk would please read the title of ordinance 1466?
Ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, correcting the error in folio numbers in ordinance 1414 that addressed the voluntary annexation of eight parcels of certain real property located within the US 301 Industrial Park, adopted by the city council on April 4th, 2017, providing severability and effective date in repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
If acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve TXD 18-03 on first reading. If approved, the ordinance will appear for a second reading and public hearing on January 15th. Is there a motion?
Move to approve ordinance 1466 to correct previously adopted ordinance 1414 due to Scrivener's error.
Councilman Donahue has made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second from Councilman Chambers. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the nay sign? Thank you, motion carries. Next, a resolution approving the acceptance of grant funds in purchase of predictive policing software. Deputy Police Chief Sealy will explain. Deputy Chief.
Evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, Merry Christmas. Bernard Sealy, Deputy Chief of Police. The police- The Police Department is proud to report to Council that we've been awarded $36,610 through the Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant State Solicitation for the proposed purchase of predictive policing software through the Santa Monica, California-based company PredPol. This is a non-matching reimbursement grant, and the agreement is over a period of three years with an option to renew at that time. If approved, the department intends to employ the software, which utilizes analytical tools and forecasting models synchronized with our records management system as a force multiplier to predict where and when specific crimes are most likely to occur, and proactively assist our patrol division in helping to reduce crime rates and victimization. PredPol uses a machine learning algorithm to calculate its predictions. Historical event data sets are used to train the algorithm, usually within two to five years of inputted data. PredPol then updates the algorithm each day with new events as they are received through our RMS system. Because PredPol uses only three data points, crime type, crime location, and crime date and time to create its predictions, no personally identifiable information is ever used, no demographic, ethnic, or socioeconomic information is ever used, and this eliminates the possibility for privacy or civil rights allegations or violations of civil rights, which is sometimes seen with other types of intelligence-led policing models. These predictions are displayed as red boxes on a web interface using Google Maps. Each box is 150 by 150 square meters. The boxes represent the highest-risk areas each day for the corresponding shift, and officers will be instructed to spend roughly about 10% of their shift, which equates to about six minutes per hour in those boxes. Currently, the Police Department does not have a sole crime analyst, and we utilize the manpower from our Investigative Services Division and other street-level intelligence to attempt to forecast criminal activity. Just some statistics that we were able to pull up, the Los Angeles Police Department's Foothill Division, which implements PredPol, saw a 20% drop in predictive crimes over a year between January 13 and January 2014, and experienced actually a crime-free day on February 13, 2014. Their Foothill Division crimes were down 13% in the four months following the rollout of PredPol, compared to an increase of .4% for the rest of the city where PredPol had not been rolled out. It has also been deployed in the City of Atlanta. The initial launch was in 2013. Aggregate crime decreased by 8%, and 9% in two areas of their city where PredPol was deployed. Locally, the Orange County Sheriff's Office implemented PredPol in 2014 and saw property crimes drop from 16,521 to 16,074, according to their annual report published in March of 2016. The same time period, Orange County saw violent crimes decrease from 5,551 to 5,475, and property crimes decreased from 31,662 to 31,445, according to the UCR data. We understand that predictive policing models and methods are very useful, but they are not crystal balls. These algorithms predict the risk of future events and not the events themselves, but we believe that a tool like this can assist our officers in identifying hotspots within our city to patrol in those times between calls for service. It is our request that Council approve the acceptance of these grant funds and the expenditure before you tonight. May I stand for questions?
Thank you, Deputy Chief. I'd first ask if there are any members of the public that would like to address Council on this item. Seeing none, I would ask if Council has questions. Councilman Chisler.
Yeah, it looks like a pretty good package. Two questions. One, how long has PredPol been around? I couldn't...
PredPol was first introduced in 2006.
Okay. Second question, I couldn't find anything in their annual licensing fees. This is for three years, or...
The three years is inclusive of the $36,000, which includes the licensing. They actually, because we signed or had the potential to sign a three-year agreement, they waived setup fees, and the licensing is built within it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments, Council? If acceptable, would entertain a motion approving the acceptance of grant funds in the purchase of predictive policing software. Is there a motion?
I move to accept the Byrne grant funds and direct it towards the purchase of PredPol.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye. Opposed, the nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Deputy Chief. Council business, is there any carryover business from our previous meeting?
Yes, there is.
Councilman Donahue.
Thank you. I speak tonight not to make any changes to the appointments that were made at the December 5 meeting. I concur that Mr. Chisler would do a great job on that board, and I absolutely have no problem with that. But for the record, some things were either taken out of context, or actions were indicated that I need to address to clear up. These were taken from the minutes, the questions, when asked about how to invest $1 million. The question was actually, if the city were given a gift of $1 million, what would you do? And my actual response was that, as the Superintendent of Schools Raymond Shelton used to say, "Every little million counts." And of course, we know that $1 million isn't as much as we would like to think it is, and it won't buy as much as we think it would. And since this is a one-time gift and cannot be counted on to be repeated, I would put the money into a reserve account earmarked as a foundation for a new Temple Terrace police station. Now, I believe that the response quoted actually belonged to another question that was asked about how I would invest money for the city, and because I have never professed to be a financial advisor, and I listen to my own financial advisor for my personal monies, and since I take the fiduciary responsibility for the city with even greater care than I do my own personal, I would definitely stick to my answer on that one. I will always look to our financial advisors and hear their recommendations. That doesn't mean I'm not going to ask lots of questions. And the second area was about a bus route being canceled, and the quote is, "A bus route was canceled, and Councilmember Donahue never briefed Council on that issue." She added, "It was brought to Council when Councilman Chalora read it in the Sunday newspaper, and also it was the city manager who was left to get it back." Well, I'd like for these following dates and actions to speak for themselves. On January 7, I attended my very first Hart Board meeting. On the 12th of January, I emailed a request to the city manager asking for the CEO Catherine Hagan to be placed on our council agenda. On March 7, the CEO reported an overall status of Hart to our city council. On August 7, Hart introduced Mission Max to the own board, and several Temple Terrace citizens spoke against it. On August 18, CEO Catherine Hagan, at my request, contacted the city manager requesting a date to present Mission Max to our city council. On August 25, the city manager reports in his council update, and I quote, "I had been planning to contact CEO of Hart to discuss the impact of Hart's revised bus routes, but in the interim, her office reached out to me for a September 5 council meeting. On September 5, CEO Catherine presents the Mission Max to city council and announces that even though one of the Temple Terrace routes had been severely modified, a plan to take care of those who needed service was being implemented, and it was called Hyperlink." On October 3, Temple Terrace Council minutes, quote, "Councilmember Donahue said, as a representative of Hart Board, she spent the day Friday riding the bus, and she is working with Hart on Route 57. She will hold a meeting Friday, October 6, at 9:30 a.m. at Nantucket Bay Apartments," end quote. November 6, emails to constituents, quote, "I did talk to the CEO about the unsafe walk across 56th Street to the park and ride, and she is going to send me info on how we can fix that. I'm also talking to our city manager, asking him to talk to FDOT about the crosswalk," end quote. On November 21, an email from the city manager. Cheryl, reminder that Councilmember Donahue requested that Hart prepare a presentation to council on December 5 meeting. December 5, CEO Catherine Hagan makes her third presentation to Temple Terrace City Council, bringing an update of Hart's Mission Max. She said, quote, "Route 57 was discontinued, but a vast majority of people who use this route are using Hyperlink." She mentioned that Hart will be making modifications in February of 2018. On April 3 of 2018, the interim CEO Jeff Seward spoke at another city council meeting, making a commitment to bring back Route 57, now called 48, to serve Temple Terrace, and will work with Councilmember Donahue, city manager, and police chief to identify needs of our city. This makes the fourth presentation to city council in seven months about Mission Max. May 14, Hart announces public meetings for proposed service changes, quote, "To allow the authority to connect with transit customers and the community and get feedback for a new proposed service option called Route 48 that will provide services in the Temple Terrace area," end quote. These were scheduled for May 16 at the Temple Terrace Public Library and May 22 at City Hall. June 2018, press release sent to all media outlets, as well as our own PR department, who posted it on our Facebook page, entitled, "You Spoke, We Listened: New Route in Temple Terrace Announced for July 1 Implementation." August 25, Councilwoman Donahue invited to join the Hart ride-along on New 48 with press coverage invited citizens, citizens from Nantucket Bay Apartments and others. Donahue spoke on behalf of Hart with ridership information. By the way, on all of these items, I will give the backup materials to city clerk, so she can attach them to the minutes. Question number three, or item number three, I should say, quoting from the minutes, "Councilmember Ross brought up moving a bus stop. Two meetings ago, Councilmember Donahue said it wasn't that easy. Again, city manager stepped forward and got it done," end quote. I want to remind everybody of Article 1, Section 103, Separation of Powers in our Charter. There shall be a distinct separation of legislative and administrative powers. Except as otherwise herein expressly provided, all legislative powers shall be vested in and exercised by the city council, and all administrative powers shall be vested in and exercised by the city manager. Division 2, Specific Offices, Section 2-81, City Manager. Responsibilities: The city manager shall be responsible to the city council for the proper administration of all affairs of the city, and shall execute the laws and administer the government of the city. Now, I take the definition of separation of duties very seriously. I can assist the city manager, I can bring ideas, I can facilitate meetings, and follow with the Hart staff, but it is not in any way in my power to work with governmental agencies such as Hart, County, FDOT, and the city when working on an issue such as this bus stop. As you can see in this timeline, it is not something that can quickly be done. On December 5, 2017, CEO Catherine Hagan responded to Councilman Ross that she would look into it. April 16 of 2018, Donahue set up a meeting with interim CEO Jeff Seward and city manager to discuss the bus stop. The three met in the City Hall conference room. May 21, city manager followed up with an email to interim CEO, reported that he was working not only on the bus stop, but on the issue of unkempt bus benches hosted by J.C.'s. May 29, city manager and interim CEO met at City Hall. September 12, interim CEO updated the city manager on the progress and copied me on the email. October 23, interim CEO updated the city manager on new permanent stop ADA compliant with shelter north of current location closer to Golden Corral, and copied me on the email as he should. November 5, interim CEO reports to Hart Board that due to the safety issue at this stop, he was using an emergency procurement process to satisfy Temple Terrace. Now, I only bring these items to correct what was said. I have no intention of having a catfight on this dais with our mayor. She was elected, and so was I. She was elected to do her job, and I respect that job. I was elected to do my job, and I would appreciate if all of us would not be put in a position that one of us has to be made to look better, one of us has to be made to look worse. I know that Mr. Chisler would do a good job at what he has been asked to do. I know Mr. Ross is doing a great job on the riverboard. I know Mr. Chambers has a love for the library board, and I know Mr. Chalora has many different boards that he sits on. I too have my strengths, and I would appreciate that this type of, I don't know what we can call this, because something has happened, and we had been accused, many years ago, there was a survey, and it said that the Temple Terrace Council, they don't get along. Well, we're trying, and we can only talk to each other through the city manager. I point to you tonight because you're in the seat. And so, the city manager's responsibility is to help us understand where we each stand on items, and if we need to look further into it, we can. I intend to serve the appointments that I can fulfill, which will be the Homeless Coalition, Affordable Housing Coalition for Hillsborough County, and for the Suncoast League of Cities Group. I have every intention of doing that. I will bring back reports, because obviously, I think what we've been told now is that the mayor would like for us to bring reports back from our committees, so that everyone can hear what's going on. If that's what I did to bring that upon myself, I apologize to my fellow council members, I apologize to my citizens. I will do a better job in the future of making sure that any actions that I take are reported. And I would like to submit this to the, by the way, remember, I'm not asking for a vote, I'm not asking to change anything, I just want to clear up the record from last week. So, thank you for allowing me to do that.
And I will just quickly state, as statements have been made this evening, I very thoughtfully and reflectively and prayerfully made appointments. I made appointments based on where greatest strengths of our council members were. I looked at resumes, I looked at backgrounds. The Hart Board has moved over the last four years. I sat last week at MUMA, the University of South Florida, looking at a regional report on our region. It's 20 different cities that are evaluated, and they're evaluated against 30 different Four years ago, we were number 19 out of 20 in how we moved people around on our bus transportation. This year, we're 20 out of 20. The needle was just not moving in the correct way. There had been organizational challenges and fiscal challenges of an ongoing nature. For that reason, the appointment was changed. This is not a new precedent in our city. We have changed specifically Hartline appointments in the past, and again, this was truly to capitalize off the best skills. I tried to be very factual in presenting what has been said and why the appointments were made. Someone chose to take it personally. It truly was a business decision on how to best serve the citizens of our city. Even this issue is taking us off the big track. I want to thank Mr. Noonan for your comments this evening. We put $3.5 million in the bank. A $3.5 million debt was paid on a $10 million loan. We have now very conservatively recognized over $10,000 savings monthly that can go into things like paying down our police and our fire pension deficit. There are things that we can do to really put our city on strong financial footing. That should be the focus. Every single person sitting at this dais, as we knocked on doors, all being elected, heard one strong thing from our citizens. Do something about redevelopment. Get things moving. Over the last 10 months, because of the coordinated efforts of this council, we have three deals signed. We have hard money in the bank. We have a groundbreaking that is scheduled for January 31. I hope everyone will come out and join us. So, the right things are happening, the right things will continue to happen. One thing that is very true, as people talk about friendships... One thing that is very true, as people talk about friendships and relationships, this council cannot talk off the dais. That is the law. So, if someone says someone's not being friendly to someone, part of it is by law, we should not be talking about city bu, business if we are not here. For transparency, what happens, happens here. I would ask if there is any other old business, council business, new business? Councilman Ross.
Well, I had kind of envisioned this a little differently, the timing's off, a little off on this, but maybe we need a little good news. So, many of you have seen these signs popping up through the city, and you'll, if you haven't, take a look and you'll find them, they're on trash receptacles at the bus stops, at the parks, at city parks. I noticed one right out in front of the, the building as I walked in. I just wanted to give kudos not only to the city manager, but I think this was Ray LeBlanc's idea, he's the director of sanitation, and I think this slogan was one that was his idea, and I think these signs are very attractive, they're inexpensive, they look good, we've got our city brand out there all over the place, I think it's a, a great idea, and I know, I don't see Ray here, but I wanted to thank him for that. I also noticed, and, and again, kudos to the city manager for this, and I don't know what staff worked on this, but there are signs at 56th and Bush, if you look at that decorative wall, it's on all four corners of that intersection, you'll see the city signs are now up on those walls, and again, they're very inexpensive, not a ton of money, and it's our brand is up there, particularly in the redevelopment area, so I don't know who besides Charles to thank for that, but that was a good move on somebody's part, so. And the last thing, Madam Mayor, is the Riverwatch Task Force has asked to make a brief presentation to us, hopefully on January the 15th, if that is possible, to brief us and update us on some things that they have going on. I could tell you, but I think it's better to hear it from them than it is from me. And they don't need a lot of time, but if that's possible, I'd like to try to get them on the agenda for the 15th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other new business to come before council? Council, Councilman Chalora?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of things I want to, to address, and one of those are, I, I'd like to know a little bit more at, at our next meeting, I know there's a lot going on, and our thoughts and prayers are with the city manager, so I'm not trying to burden the, the administration right now, but what the, the layout is right now, and the annexation in the industrial park, how much we got to do, or where we're going to go from here, because I know we've been annexing, and I commend you guys, you've been taking a step in the right direction. But also, I think it's been this, this council's goal, at least the, not the newly-elected folks, but the previous council, and I, you know, I would assume that the newly-elected folks have probably followed the same path, that annexation has been one of the top priorities, and I would like to see what our plan is with that. I mean, I think this last time around was, was not well organized. It was, it was structured when there was a rezoning going on in a neighborhood, and that neighborhood was not very happy. There was also attacks on a referendum coming up. You can't ask for change when there's lots of other challenging changes that are coming before you. The last time the city did this, they, it was a fiasco as well, they asked for a, a referendum in, in that neighborhood north of Fowler during the same time that the city was asking for a 1% tax increase. That's just, doesn't make any sense. Every council member except myself had a, support the referendum sign in their yard. I just don't think that, that makes logical sense, but I think we're going in the right direction. Redevelopment is taking off, as Mr. Noonan said, you know, instead of all this drama on this dais, talking about he said, she said, we said, we need to worry about what's going to make the city better. That gets us nowhere. Let's address the issues before the city. And, and we all get caught up in it. I'm not innocent either, but we need to focus on what is important. We do not need to be talking about what under the bridge. We live and learn, and we move on. But redevelopment is huge, gigantic, very little has been said about it. The last meeting, the motion was brought up, the council unanimously endorsed it, that's all that was said about it, and then three, four weeks later, the newspaper finally wrote about it. But when the mayor was talked about, it was headlines for three weeks in a row. It was on every news channel in town. That's drama. Okay? But we're here to, to do the city's business. If somebody does something wrong, then by all means, you know, prosecute them, do whatever you have to do, there's laws that protect this community. But this he said, she said, needs to stop, we need to move forward. I would urge this council to focus on important city business, the platform that we all have run on. Redevelopment is the most important, and annexation is right behind it. And I still have not seen a, a, a comprehensive plan for an annexation approach. So, I would like, in, in the months to come, not now, I know there's a lot going on with, with our city, this isn't a, an attack on our city, I'm just, I would like, this is what I'd like to see as a, as a council member coming before us. I, I know all the intents are in the right place, but I think priority redevelopment, priority annexation, and if the city continues to grow and redevelopment debt continues to, to get paid down, then maybe for once, we don't have to raise the millage rate in the city of Temple Terrace. Because for the last God knows how many years, the rate has gone up. Although they say the millage rate went, went down, the values go up. And if you do your math, one plus one doesn't equal two. Okay, so it's psychological. But having said that, I, I really would, would ask all of us to focus on the important city business and the issues before us. Let's, let's all work together in a unified front, and there's times we'll, we'll disagree, and we'll respectfully disagree, and, and we continue to move forward. But, you know, going into the holidays, I, I would urge us all to, to embrace that approach and, and look forward to, to working with this council into the, into the new year. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other new business? We will then go to city manager's report, Chief Albano.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And before I, I get into the city manager's report, I, I just want to take this opportunity to publicly congratulate and show appreciation to our deputy chief. I'm sure every member up here on the, on the dais understands the, the dedication and the amount of effort it takes to acquire a grant, especially so a competitive grant, this grant that awards the, the city and through your acceptance, the police department with this $36,000 was not a, a, an easy task, it was not a one-time presentation, the deputy chief had to stay at it. He presented this to a, to a county board before this year, and our project simply didn't get voted favorably. He brought it back up again this year, e, even though that was something that was basically unheard of, and successfully convinced that board that this project had merit, and, and acquired the votes necessary to bring it to the city. So, as deputy chief, he's not, he's not out racing around the streets and doing a lot of things, it gets him a lot of recognition, but I can tell you, he's been my deputy chief since Pat Powers retired, and he does a lot of work, and he is the grants manager and deserves all the credit for this, so I just want to say thank you. He probably hates me for it. So, with that, the city manager asked me to, to mention, if it wasn't mentioned, that the first council meeting in January is on New Year's Day, so, Madam Mayor, this council needs to consider what they would like to, to do. He, he asked me to assure you and this council that whatever you decide, he, he can make happen, if you want to postpone it to a later date, that's acceptable. He, he did want me to share with you that we only have two agenda items currently, and that if it was the will of this council to, to push it till the 15th, that, that would not prohibit him from conducting the things that he needs to do, nor staff getting the job accomplished. So, that would be the first thing, if this council wanted to discuss that and let us know something. If you did want to push it, he would suggest the 3rd on a Thursday, although his recommendation would be that, that we just push it to the 15th.
Very good. Is there a motion to-
Madam Mayor, my motion would be that we follow the recommendation of our acting city manager and push that meeting back to the next scheduled regular meeting.
I second that. We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye. Opposed, nay, sign, thank you.
Thank you very much, I'll, I'll make sure he's, he's aware of that. As you know, Hurricane Michael literally decimated the Panhandle. And as you also know, your police department has been working through some staffing difficulties, so we were not able to deploy, although the Florida Police Chiefs Association did send out a number of missions. One of the things that has come before us now for the second time is a, is a need in, in the Panhandle region for vehicles. I have shared this with the city manager, and he asked me just to share with you that he has authorized me to, to work with Chief Harold Peterson of the Jackson County School District Police Department in offering some of our surplus vehicles, vehicles that have already been decommissioned, vehicles that have already met the, the, the service to our city, that aren't really acceptable for the type of policing that we do, but will serve this school district police department well. They lost all of their vehicles in, in the hurricane, so he wanted me to share that with you. I mean, it's a pittance of what we get at the auction, but it'd make all the difference in the world for them. So, I've already started working with staff, and will continue that, but that is his plan. And lastly, I wanted to remind everybody that this Friday, December 21st, at 10 o'clock, we have the swearing-in ceremony for our three newest officers, and obviously, all of council, and you may, are invited to attend, so that would be my report.
Thank you. If there is no further business to come before this council, Temple Terrace citizens, businesses, our employees, on behalf of council, we wish you all a Merry Christmas, a joyous holiday season, and there is, there is more business. Councilman Chalora.
I had asked our city attorney today to update us on the status of the other redevelopment projects, so we know where they are in the timeline and how they're moving along, and if we can get those updates at every, at every meeting, that certainly would be helpful. We get updates from the city manager's report, but the general public does not, so that would be helpful, and I gave her heads up today, if she can do that, that would be wonderful.
Thank you. My voice sounds a little bit like Councilman Chalora's tonight, so I'm going to try to do this as best I can. As you all know, the, with the Paragon sale, that closed on November 19th, 2018, there was eventually an article in the Tampa Bay Times about that. We're hoping for a ceremonial groundbreaking early in the first quarter of 2019. As for the Richmond Group, the, the purchase and sale agreement was amended, and that had extended the inspection phase to January the 18th of 2019. The developers team is, is still in discussion with the city manager and with city staff regarding certain details and questions that concern onsite water retention, parking, and relocating features of the park into a more grand entrance off of 56th, and use of the park area to enhance their entryway. As those discussions are going on, I have been working with Richmond's attorney to finalize a third amendment to the purchase and sale agreement, which so far does not involve any further extensions, but just addresses these issues mostly with regard to parking and driving area at this time. Enigma, the, we're, is still in a first draft stage of the purchase and sale contract. I've been talking to and emailing with Enigma's attorney, everything is going smoothly and congenially, congenially, and they, he's expressed that they are in, very anxious to close, they want to get this done as soon as possible. We're talking about now who's going to serve as the escrow agent, so that is one thing that has to be decided. The last part will be probably, definitely be in front of you at the January meeting. That concerns the, I'm going to be recommending to you an amendment to the reciprocal easement and operating agreement that had been in existence now since Vlas. It has many obsolete portions to it. I had already shared the draft with you, we're still on that seam. It has not changed since what I sent to you about a month ago, so that you would be aware of that. All it really, Paragon had insisted upon that as part of their closing, but they went ahead and closed anyway, but we agreed that the council would address that in January. The only thing I'm waiting on now is just the paragraph, the paragraphs that concern Richmond's part of the development. So, since we still are talking with them, those are the few little additions, they have already looked at what I did send to you and are happy with that, but there are still a few items that they want to add into that. And really, we're trying to decide now whether they should go into the REOA, or whether they should be part of our purchase and sale agreement. So, it's really just figuring out the, the details and which document they fall into. But that does need to be addressed at the January meeting. And that's it.
And I'd just like to make a suggestion that if, I would just like to make a suggestion that if, in fact, any of these developers ask for extensions, that that is brought to this council for discussion. Normally, when there are extensions, there is a price associated with an extension. They're eating up more of our time, and we're paying interest on that money, so that needs to be, you know, they have to have skin in the game, unless it's a problem that we need to correct, a title issue of some sort, but if they just need more due diligence for whatever the reason may be on their part, that needs to be brought to this council for discussion, and a, a decision to be made, because I don't want to get into the same situation as the last where it got dragged out for months, because we're paying, they're not, and it's, you know, on our backs. So, if you can, you know, please take note of that, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
And if there's no further business to come before council, we stand adjourned.